This is a recording of the Suffolk Public Library Board of Trustees. It is December 12th at 7:03 PM. We'll go around and do an introduction. Lynn Blair.
Heather Dunphy.
Michael McMahon.
Tammy Syak Basalam.
Tracy Meswar.
Alright, I am going to share my screen. Actually, we have the minutes first, and I sent that to everybody. So copies of minutes for you guys here. Here you go, Heather, you can have one too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I emailed everybody the November, oh, I should ask tonight, is anybody up for taking minutes tonight?
I'll do it again. I'll just watch the meeting and take it from there.
It should be posted like within like two days or so. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy. So I emailed everybody the minutes. Tammy did the November 14th minutes. Thank you very much. The only thing that, there was one correction. Tammy noted that we didn't, that she didn't include that we discussed renewing the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce. And I think Tammy, you said that was under my communications. So if.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, if it's all good to everyone, I will just add that we discussed renewing the GWCC membership and everybody okayed it for another year.
Sounds good to me.
Hi Tracy, accept the minutes.
Oh, do we actually, I don't think we can actually vote on them because we don't have a quorum.
Right, we don't, yeah, we don't have.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll table that for next time with the correction. Unless any, did anybody else notice any other corrections that need to be made? Alright, if there's no other corrections, I've got the November statistics. And I'm gonna share my screen, so you guys should be able to see that. Okay, so I hope Tracy and I'll go away. I hope Tracy and Tammy can see that. So we have the November statistics. I mean, November was kind of a quieter month. If you saw the circulation was a little bit less, potentially could be because we were closed one additional day for Veterans Day. So instead of just being closed like a Friday, it fell on a Saturday, so we were closed a Friday and a Saturday. But other than that, I mean, the gift, the gift deposit line, you'll see a little bit more because that accounts for our first state aid award. But other than that, I mean, I think it was a pretty typical November. Alright, any, any other questions or comments? Here's page two, but that's just, that's fiscal year 23 and the first half of 24.
You've got the event software up and running?
Yeah, yeah, so if we move on to the old business, we have Library Aware, or not Library Aware, this is Eventkeeper up and running. We've, we made it go live to the public Friday. So starting in January, people can register for events and view our calendar. So they can view our calendar online, register for events from there. We, the only issue we did notice was that when we first put it out there, I think a lot of people were clicking on it at once. So it was very slow. And a couple people pointed that out, but once, you know, because I sent out an email, put it on Facebook like all in the span of 15 minutes. And so I think a lot of people were clicking on it at once, so it just really slowed down. But other than that, I mean, I think people have been using it. I've seen a couple people register. I've gotten no complaints, so we're happy with it. I mean, and if it turns out any gear that we don't like it and it's not serving our purposes, then we can just easily go back to what we're doing. The next thing I have, I just, we just completely bypassed the director's report, but I'll go back to that, the communications after the old business. So the gallery manager volunteer position, I have had no responses. I've, I've emailed almost 15 of our past artists that we've had here. I emailed, I talked to one person, she recommended emailing artworks, Westfield and the Valley Arts Newsletter. Somebody suggested emailing Cindy Sullivan. I've tried to reach out to her to see if she has any suggestions, and I've just contacted a couple colleagues in the area who are artists, hoping that they might know somebody to take over the position. And I have gotten zero responses. So I guess the question is now, I really don't, and this was about two weeks ago, so I doubt I'm gonna hear back from anybody. If I do, then I'll for sure add them to our January meeting, which is what we were planning on having somebody come in. I guess the, the question is, what do we want to do? Because I don't feel like, I am not an artist, and I don't, I don't feel like I'm qualified, you know, to, to choose what, you know, what goes in the show, and, and if people have questions about things like that, I mean, that is not in my wheelhouse. There's also a lot of, kind of like, it, it's a lot, it's a lot of extra work. You know, Janine did a wonderful job for many, many years, and she also said no thank you to having an event with Kate as like a thank you, so. How would we like to proceed? As of right now, I did ask, we don't have anybody for January. I did ask the December artist if she'd like to keep her artwork up for January. But I haven't, I haven't heard back from her. I'm sure she will unless she's got another show to do, but I mean, if it has to sit empty for a month or two, that's fine, but I just don't want it to.
It's something we can talk about again in January.
And then our computer replacement schedule update. Jim has been here today. He's updating a bunch of our computers. Like I said last time, I was ordering a bunch from wallet computers. And Jim had two to give us, so between the three we ordered and the two he gave us, we've been able to replace five computers, which is, which is really good. Our annual action plan update was approved by the MBLC on November 15th, so I submitted, I submitted that, they approved it. It's now on our website. For anybody's light reading. Bumping back to the director's report, because no matter how many times I do this, I always skip the director's report. So, Library Aware, which is the new software we've been using, we started it maybe in June, I think it was like June. We've had our email lists have been going really good. We've got a lot of response from people. I've added three new email lists for one for like global history, genealogy, one for just plain book recommendations, and then one for business career job searching. So people who have interest in those subjects, they can sign up, probably send out maybe like one to two emails a month of things that might be of interest to them. I did meet with Inga, who's the new, I think she's the chair, she's the chair of the Economic Development Commission, and discuss ways that we can potentially collaborate. I know they're, they're working on a new website, so I kind of showed her the space, like if it was something she was looking for, for events and whatnot. So they're, they're still kind of figuring things out from the sounds of it, but she'll definitely keep us in mind, and she'll talk to the board about what we discussed when we met. I'm booking programs for the new year into, or already booking into April, which is really good. We've got a lot going on. Kind of going off what people are looking for. So we've got music, we've got health-related events, we've got all of our, our regular events. So we've got quite a lot booked for the first four months of 2024. And a lot of it is just kind of what people have been asking for. People want to see more concerts, they want to see, see more health-related events. And of course, the craft events. The craft events are always popular, and those will continue into, into 2024. So if we are moving into new business, unless anybody has any comments or questions for me. So, oh, sorry Tracy, was that you?
No, no, I was just, I was thinking, if we can't get like an artist who's willing to do something like that, you know, maybe we could get like, like the high schoolers or whatever, like that are on the higher end to like post their work there for like extra credit or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we were to do that, we'd have to have somebody, there still has to be somebody who kind of coordinates, because there's forms that they have to fill out, there's paperwork. And, yeah, and I think the idea is to kind of keep it, you know, I mean, some people have been doing one month, some people have been doing two months. And I'd really, Janine still comes in a lot, so I really want to make sure that it doesn't fall by the wayside. Somebody suggested potentially like having it be like finding a college student or it being some type of internship. But I haven't gotten any.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, like art history major or some kind of art major or business or business or something.
Any response to those either. So if you know of somebody, definitely pass, pass it along, because I am not qualified to determine.
What about, would anyone on the cultural council know the people that they use when they do the art show at Town Hall?
Yeah, I did, I did talk to, I emailed Pat, Pat McMahon, and she, she suggested somebody, but unfortunately, I haven't heard back from them either. Okay. So we're, we're hitting a dead end no matter which direction we go. But we'll keep plugging along. So the budget request preparation. So, everybody will notice that Heather is with us tonight for our super fun meeting. So, and there's, there's a couple of things we need to discuss, but we'll start with Heather in case Heather doesn't want to sit through the rest of this. So when we submit the, the budget to the town, as Michael knows, as you all know when we submit the forms, we have to leave the salary sections blank. That is determined by the accountant department, by the unions, that section we have to leave blank. So Heather's here tonight to just kind of discuss, because between, between this year and, so for the last fiscal year, from fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 23, that's when we increased Heather's hourly rate. So that was a 12% increase. But then between fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24, which is now, there was a point, it was a 0.38%. So Heather's just kind of wondering how we.
0.38.
0.38%, yeah. So, so, so Heather's just wondering how we can advocate, because how it's been described to me is that Heather's kind of grouped in with the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, the, the kind of administrative assistance groupings.
Right, the non-union.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, I've kind of gone through the last finance committee for the May 16th, 2023 town meeting. And, I mean, I've, I've run some numbers for, for percentages of increases of other administrative assistants, but I don't know for certain who is in that grouping, you know what I mean? So you can say this person got this percent, this person got this percent. I don't know who qualifies under that.
Generally, the selectmen for the non-union people would say, oh, we'll give them one and a half percent, or 2% or 1% or whatever. And it's just, it's a number that just comes from somewhere, from the ceiling or from the floor, it just appears.
Yeah, I mean.
And it, it's the Lisa Andersons before her, it was Cindy.
Yeah.
In the Selectman's Office, it's kind of people.
I mean, so I think, you know, looking at the Select Board, the administrative assistant, I mean, theirs came out, and this is just, this is just from the Finance Committee report, so, and that's where I ran the numbers from, so disclaimer for that. But I mean, hers, hers was a 2%, you know, so why there was kind of the discrepancy between the two. So Heather's just wondering, you know, what she, and, I mean, you can, I don't want to speak for you, so if you want to kind of say what, say what you want to say.
No, it's just with the, the increased cost of living expenses this last year with inflation going up crazy amounts, you know, 6% and 12% on certain items, shelter, food and so on, where, where everyone's, you know, everyone's just tightening their belts from cost cutting and all this kind of thing. So what I'd like to do is know, or have some advice about how do I go about asking for, you know, something like a 50 cents an hour raise, which is under 2%. Like, you know, I, I know we're all trying to kind of cut our, our budgets and, you know, there's talk about level funding. But I do know that, you know, the union folks have the union to advocate for them. Lynn obviously dukes it up with a sledboard and, and so I'm kind of in this weird limbo area where I don't have anyone to advocate for me, so I kind of have to speak up for myself and try to understand and, you know, work within the process. I mean, I'm extremely, extremely, extremely grateful for, you know, what happened a couple of years ago where you guys were able to help me get a little higher in my salary bracket. That was absolutely terrific. And I kind of, you know, wore it out through last year saying, well, you know, I did get that salary raise at that time, so I can understand how, you know, they probably didn't want to do too much last year. But I'm worrying about this position kind of falling into a rut and just not, you know, being advanced kind of in a, in a fair, equal way. I don't really want to put that judgment on it, but, you know, I just, I, I do need to speak up for myself and just kind of say, hey, Ken, is there any way that I can kind of advocate for something reasonable, you know? 50 cents an hour is, is like, it's just, you know, it's under 2%, it's maybe not that much. But that's kind of where I'm at, so.
That, that's something we can try to do. I can see if I can talk to Carl, because he's still gonna be here until I think sometime in February. To catch him before he was off the door.
Oh, no.
If, if they had standard, which they don't, of the non-union people get one and a half or 2% or something that was understandable.
Yeah, that would kind of tap my, my anxiety down, so I would, you know, I would feel more assured that.
Part of what they had in the Selectman's Office is Cindy had been there for years. She left. Robin came in. Robin retired at some point during COVID. Because we met her at the transfer station, she said, oh, I'm retired. Oh, we didn't know you left. And then Lisa appeared. And then they, I don't know what they did, but they were juggling them around. Well, I, I don't know what went into that process.
Alright, so you'll check in with Carl and then just, just let us know.
Yeah.
And we can, we can go from there.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
And then we can always, at the same time, when the FinCon gets, you know, does their budget deliberations, since I, I know the chairman used to be a selectman. He runs, he owns malicious. I can always talk to him, because there's been a lot of turnover in the finance committee. And I don't even know who most of those people are.
That would be very, very, I appreciate that very much, yeah.
You know, one other thing that.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Say that, I'm sorry, we have our volume all the way up, but we, if you can speak very loudly.
Okay, one other thing I, maybe we could do is, I don't know, maybe write a letter or something to the selectmen and the finance and Carl, and say that, you know, this position is going by the wayside. And, you know, we could all sign it or whatever, just so that maybe there can be more of a standard for her. So she doesn't have to go through this all the time.
Did you hear that?
You know?
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, a letter to accompany the, the budget documents that you have to submit.
Yeah.
Talk about it in those, you know.
Right. I mean, I'm, I don't know too much on finances, but I think if we have it all in writing saying that, you know, as trustees, we don't think her position is being treated fairly.
Right.
I think that might go, you know, a little ways.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tracy. You can stay, you can leave, you can stay, you can, you can hang out. It's up to you if you've got work to do.
Yeah.
We're almost finished.
Yeah, we're, we're almost finished. So the next thing on the budget preparation, we will probably, we were going, Heather kindly put together the reports for like, because I know last year we had to borrow from another line to cover the fuel line. So I'm thinking we may just need to ask for a little bit more in fuel this year.
That gas line, the 8400 hours.
Yes, yes.
We've had that same 8400 dollar number for like 10 or 12 years since we put the old selection in the room.
Yeah. I mean, so we, so we did, we did transfer in 2000 from another line. And that, with, with my math, if we didn't transfer in, we would still have like a tiny, tiny bit left, but I think they transferred it in just to make sure that, you know, we didn't, because you never know what the bills are gonna be. So, I mean, it's hard to figure out the bills for the fuel in January when the winter hasn't hit its hardest part yet, so we may just need to ask for a little bit more.
What the rates would be six months.
Yeah, yeah, but we may just need to ask for a little, I mean, and the electricity seems to be fine, you know, but we may just need to ask for a little bit more in the fuel. The other thing that I was going to mention, I know I mentioned it last time, we, we, and you guys recommended that we are still going to try to ask for another part-time position. My question is, when I was really sitting down to look at it and look at the numbers, I mean, the first year, what, two years ago, we asked for another completely separate, like 10-hour-a-week position. And then last year, we tried to take one of our circulation positions, expand on that for more hours. My question is, what, what direction would you recommend going in this year? Because my concern is if we keep going to circulate, to the circulation person, because we have to make sure that somebody's interested in it before we go ahead and do it. I don't want to keep asking somebody, hey, are you interested in potentially more hours if we do get this approved? Because that's really disheartening for people to get asked time and time again, and it never comes to be.
Because I, I think the certain person you were kind of calling the Marie person, increasing the hours from like 18 to 24 or something.
It was something like that, but I don't, I don't want to keep, I don't want to keep getting people's hopes up if it's not going to happen, you know what I mean? Because obviously, you know, it would be the same person we'd be asking again. Are you interested again this year? It may or may not happen, probably will not happen. But I just don't want to keep asking them and then just having it not happen. Because if that were me, I mean, that would just be, that would just feel really awful.
Right.
So, I mean, do you, do you all have a, a preference or any thoughts on how we can go about it?
Well, just so far, since there's been no guidance from the FinCon or the Select Board for next year's budget. Oh, we read in the newspaper. And that's about as, as good as the guidance stands. We could probably ask again, but maybe a little more forceful, describing what the person would be doing. Because of the, the numbers of people coming into the front door, we need, you know, more support for the public.
Well, that's, so we could try, you know, I could talk to that person, see if they're still interested. And then kind of do what we did last year.
Because I see there are other departments that add full-term employees every year, additional people. But that we're not publicly safe to, we're our creation.
The other thing is that, oh, sorry Tracy.
No, no, I was gonna say, maybe wait and see if we get the hours and then ask him, even though I know it would be hard if he wouldn't do it, maybe somebody else could fill it in, if whoever it is doesn't want to do it. Like, that way you're not asking every time. If it's been approved, then you have something to offer. Rather than to ask them and just go for it, and then if it does happen, then proceed.
Then I guess, you know, if we fall into the problem of nobody wants it, maybe we.
Could you create it as a paid internship if nobody employed wants it?
Well, then, then we, you know, then we, if it was an internship, then we'd have a lot of turnover. I'd really want this to be a very.
You then have the union issues.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's another thing. I mean, potentially if we, if we put it on there and we asked for it, and we got it, the, the rare chance that we got it, then we could go to each of our four circulation, say who's interested. If nobody's interested, maybe take those hours, the difference between the 27 or whatever and the 18, and then just try to create that as a position. Okay. Okay, thank you Tracy. The good news is, is that our CW Morris estimate is only a point 69% increase. So this year it was 6,959, and next year it's going to be 7,007. So that's, that's good. And then the last thing. So we didn't ask, well, we did ask for, for funds for a new telephone system last year, and we didn't get it because of they were talking about doing wiring and cabling something for the town. I'm gonna check in with Doug and see where we're at with that. I mean, if it's like five years off, we should just replace the telephone system. I mean, it's, it's from 2008 and we haven't had any issues lately, but, I mean, if it's from 2008 and something goes haywire, you know.
Because again, you've got to look out the future.
Yeah.
If it was a next year's budget, and it takes three months to get it, have it installed versus
Yeah.
two and a half or three years to get it installed.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was thinking, because what, I mean, I'm sure the quoted price has gone up by now, but I think it was only a little over $2,000. It was really not, not that bad. So I will add that in again, after I check in with Doug, just to see where things.
Make sure you're making foolproof, that when they're reading the issued paper, they can tell it's the wireless phone at that price, because remember that was the issue last year.
Yeah, I think, I think on the document I submitted, I had, I had the cost, the cost of the wiring, which wasn't much, and then the cost of the phones themselves, and it all came, I think it was like 2,100 or roughly around there.
The thing is, the piece of paper you give them has to be foolproof, so there's no question. Because if there's question, you then throw them off. You throw them off, they put an X through it.
Okay, and then that was it for the budget. Next thing, and I'm scrolling down to it on my screen, and just give me a second to rotate it. And I'm sorry that my scanned copies are in black and white, for those of you on Zoom. So, we did get our state aid in, and Heather's here, so Heather gets a copy.
Yes.
We'll start with, start with these ones. So what I, and I, I know, I'm sorry for the black and white pictures, you guys. What we're looking to do under this, under the new business where I have for furniture and shelving replacements, I would really like to take some of our state aid funds and invest in just improving a couple areas. The first page here is kind of what our reading look, look looks like now with these really. The first page here is kind of what our reading look, nook looks like now with these really old, ugly green chairs. Um I'd really love to.
Just because they're, they're twenty-something years old.
They're, I know, but they're, they're stained and they're just. Yeah, yeah, so I was looking into ordering um just some new comfortable seating. So I I had a couple options here as I'm scrolling through, I really like the ones on the um on the, so something like that, what I have up on the screen for you guys, these kind of, um, you know, something like the top one there on the second page. Or um the one on the, the last page, you know, just something that's a little more comfortable, a little more friendly.
The 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 two on the right-hand page look like something in a reception area of.
Yeah, and those, those I was showing you the cheaper options. You know what I mean? But I I really like, like the one on the last page or something like, or the the second option. I just. I think, you know, it just looks nicer.
It looks very comfy.
What was that, Tammy?
It looks very comfy.
Does, and I, and I, I think if we get four of them, we can reuse the tables that are there now. Um and then just really make the area just a little bit nicer. So that's, so that's one proposal of um using some state aid funds for that. I'd also like to.
How much do we have in state aid account?
We have, we have enough, we have, there's, there's two accounts that have about thirty in them, and there's another one that has about like. Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we do have enough, and I do think, you know.
So it works like these chairs, you're probably talking maybe two K or something.
But wait, there's more, so um rotating that. So I'd also be looking to um, our our shelving space has been really small, um we're, we're really running out of space for the fiction sections. So what I would like to do is get some um end cap shelving to kind of, when we do have some, so these were the ones that I find, kind of found that were the closest match to what we have. I mean, we're not gonna find them exactly, because ours were ordered a long time ago. But they are about the closest match.
Are these real wood or are they particle board or?
Well, it says wood finish medium oak, so I'm. I I mean, it says, it says oak, I, I believe they're real, for the cost, I hope they're real. Um but they're, you know, kind of the closest that I found to what, what we were looking for.
So you're thinking of a couple of those?
I was thinking, the second page I have down here, I have, in a perfect world, we have space for seven. Um so that in itself would be about seven thousand six hundred dollars. The third page, um I did find something that is comparable. But it's, it's one of those situations where you wonder why the price is so low. I mean, the price isn't much lower, if you look at the very bottom, once you include the shipping in that and everything, it brings it up to about sixty-two hundred. So the difference really isn't astronomical. And I don't, I've never worked with this other vendor before, but I know when we order things from Demco, we know that the quality is usually there, so I'm not opposed for, you know, investing a little bit more for something that we know we're gonna use for years to come and that we want to be a good quality product. Yes, yeah, page, pages one and two are from Demco, the third page is from another vendor.
You could, the shipping on the, the other vendor seems.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's quite high. And with, when we work with Demco, we have our state contract, so that took off a pretty good-sized discount.
This other company's not on the state contract.
You know, and I asked their customer service, they would not tell me anything until they could give me a quote. So I was like, can you, can you work with a purchase order? They, they would not tell me anything, which I just, so I just wanted to show you that, yes, there are, in all honesty, there are other cheaper options.
But you, you've gotta work the whole.
You've gotta, you've gotta look at the whole thing.
I'd say go with what you know, go with who you know.
So I, I would like to um order in a perfect world about seven of those end caps. So we can fill in the fiction and um a few in the nonfiction section as well, just to take some, save some space. And then um the children's department also had um a request. It's on my next page. And this one's actually in color, so that's nice. So the children's department, um in, in the grand scheme of things, um I did check in with the children's department as well. Because I said, you know, if we're gonna be investing in some furniture, is there anything that you guys need for your collection? Obviously, since I've been here, I haven't ordered anything for the adult section. So my highest priority would definitely be those wood sheldings and then replacing those horrible green chairs. But the children's department was also interested in getting a few things too. So they have um these browser bins on the first page. There's um, they did a little description about what they'd be using them for, and the price is on the top right there. Scrolling down, let me know if I'm going too fast. They wanted another shelf for their craft, and they wanted a cart for their craft center to replace that bookshelf, to just make it more fun. And then they wanted um some new shelving, they rearranged the easy reader section, so they would like some new shelving for that as well.
Um, no, this, this company, Danko.
Danko, yeah.
Danko. Do they happen to be on any GSA contracts?
I don't know about that, we use.
I'm just wondering, I, I know you've got the state contract. But I had heard from Carl a few years ago, that state agencies and towns can also opt buy up GSA contracts, I didn't know if they were higher or lower or not.
I can, I can look into that and see if it gives us another um. Yeah, yeah, I know we get a pretty good discount with the M H E C contracts on these things. So, this is basically, I, and I know you guys don't, you, you really, you don't, you don't need to vote on this. I always just like to run it by you if I'm looking at making like bigger purchases, and this would be one of the bigger ones since I've been here. I think, you know, we have a healthy state aid account. I, I'm, I don't see anything wrong with kind of investing a little bit of that.
And the, the, the current fiscal year is very generous from Boston.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I mean, we're, we're expecting another, what, twelve thousand?
Yeah, you, you're talking twenty-four to twenty-five this year.
Yeah, yeah, so if I can spend, I didn't add everything up, um, you know what I mean? But I, I'd really like to kind of take some of that, and we, we have been kind of letting it sit, and I like, I like to say things for a rainy day as much as somebody else.
Couple of computers out of town hall, there's, you know, six, eight, nine hundred for each computer.
Yeah, so I, I'd.
Money that you can invest.
Yeah, so I'd really like to take some of our state aid and just get some new shelving, get some new chairs.
What else do people think?
Anything from Tammy or Tracy?
I like it all. Go for it and go with who you trust already.
I like the big chairs, and I really love that little kids cart, that's gonna be perfect for crafts and stuff. I think those are both really good, and I love those oversized chairs. They, you know, you just curl up in it, very nice.
Yeah, so I'm gonna um, I'll start getting things together. And hopefully, in like the next week or so, we'll get some purchase orders ready to go and, and get some things ordered. Um and the last thing I have on here, I didn't bring it in with me, I can go grab it if anybody wants to see it. We received a donation um from a gentleman, it's a nineteen-ten uh framed map of Southwick. Very nice map. And.
What do you wanna do with that?
He, he's just donating it to us to uh to display, so I mean, we.
I mean, from your perspective, what do you wanna do?
I would like to put it on the walls, I mean, it, it looks, it looks nice, it's in good condition, it's already framed. So, is that something you need to vote on? Should I? So yeah, I will, I will gladly find a home for it on the wall, whenever I can get maintenance here to hang up a picture, cause I can't hang a picture to save. Alright, that, that is it from me, unless anybody has any final comments or anything. Our next meeting is scheduled to be, I think it's January ninth, is the second January. Yep, January ninth, seven P M.
So have a good holiday, folks, see everyone back next year.
Yeah, happy holidays, everybody, good luck Tracy, have fun.
Take care, thank you, bye.